Good evening, everyone. The time is six thirty-one. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, are you available to do the invocation? Councilman Jones, are you available to do the invocation?
Certainly. Our eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much for this day. We bless you, we praise you, and we honor you because you are a great God, a wonderful God, a mighty God. Your provision is felt through all this land, and we appreciate that. Now, Father, as we come together to do the business of the city of Glen Arden, we ask for your understanding, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for peace. We thank you for your loving kindness and your tender mercies that you've bestowed on this city, and we ask you to continue in that matter. We ask, Father, in Jesus's name, that you would bless all of those that are citizens that are mourning, those citizens that need healing, those citizens that need deliverance. We pray, Lord, that you would do just that. We thank you, Lord, for the leadership of this city, Father, from the top all the way down to the Public Works Department, Lord. We ask you to bless each and every employee, Lord, each and every person that pitches in to make the city succeed. We know that it will be successful only because you have blessed it to be such. It is in Jesus's name that I pray. Amen.
Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed, I don't see her. I don't see Councilwoman Guillaume.
She's joining now.
Okay. Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson. Council Vice President Ferguson, you're muted. Council President Curtis.
Here.
Council Clerk, I'm here. This is Councilwoman Guillaume.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I can't hear you guys.
Uh-oh.
Well, oh.
Make sure your volume is up.
Unless you can't hear us, so. All right, if you can.
I'll text her.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, uh, this is, oh, is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion that relates to a public hearing? Any opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The agenda for a public hearing is adopted. Citizens, this public hearing is to hear public comments on Resolution R dash fifty-two dash twenty-two-three, Resolution to authorize the expenditure of up to ninety-one thousand dollars in additional street improvements throughout the city of Glen Arden. Comments on Resolution R dash zero-one dash twenty-two-four, Resolution authorizing amusement rental for Glen Arden Day, and R dash zero-two dash twenty-two-four, Resolution to reappoint Jermaine Hodges to the Glen Arden Housing Authority. With that, the floor is open to citizens on those pieces of legislation. If you have a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you do not know how to raise your virtual hand, please open your mic and I'll acknowledge you. Okay. Well, hearing none, no comments from citizens. Then I will close out the public hearing. The time is six thirty-six, and the public hearing is hereby adjourned. Uh, Dr. Grant. Are you available?
Yes.
Uh, could you give me the procedure to switch to our special regular session? Could you advise me? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you so much. You're closing the meeting at this time and going into, um, just request, are there any objections to accept the opening of your special meeting?
Okay, are there any objections to opening the special regular meeting? Okay, hearing none will start. Dr. Grant, uh, do we have to, um, I believe we have to, uh, have a motion to adopt the agenda next, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, do we have to do a roll call again?
Uh, no, if all is present.
And one more question, should we stop the recording and, and start a new recording for the special regular meeting?
No, you do not have to do that.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the special regular meeting? Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring.
Yes, um, and maybe we, I guess it needs to be added to the agenda, but basically I reached out to, um, Mr. Kapinski, the attorney, on the budget, and particularly the position for the police clerk. And as you know, we, we had discussion on that, and, um, the problem was that, you know, as we all know, the police clerk is Councilwoman Jones's sister, and Councilwoman Jones had conversation on that and in support of the increase in that salary. And she should not have been involved in that situation. Um, talking to the attorney, he said, you know, she, um, that we, in order for, uh, in order for her to be able to vote on the budget, we need to first take a, make a motion to increase that salary that we have in the budget and vote on it, like tonight, do a motion tonight and vote on that salary that's in this budget without Councilwoman Jones's input, and once we do that, then she's allowed to vote on the budget.
Okay. Was there anything else, Councilman Herring?
Uh, that's it.
Sorry. Um, I, uh, the attorney called, and I concur with, uh, with, uh, what Councilman Herring stated. Now, it, it, it was the, uh, the way I understood, it was consensus, not an official vote um, to, to move the, the salary to where it is now. Um, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Council President. First of all, normally when I, um, there's an issue with, uh, something that's being done, a formal letter is sent to the attorney. The attorney will send back his opinion with everybody, all of the council on it, so that we'll all know what's going on. I have not seen any documentation of that, so I'm not sure that what was presented to the attorney was what I'd said. The only thing I did in that meeting, which was a closed meeting, was, uh, comment on the position, not the person and not the salary. I told about how the position works. I did not say anything about the salary. The only salary that I commented on is when it was presented to us that the person in the administrative, uh, position in the police department always made a certain amount more than the other, the, the police clerk. And then I commented on that salary, saying that that should not be done because that person had only been in that position and a number, for not a number of, uh, for the amount of time that they had been in there. And that's the only salary that I commented on. I commented on the position, the position being a fingerprint technician, that you could Google it, and if you had issues with how the fingerprint technician did their job, for you to go personally up there and get yourself fingerprinted so that you'll know what they do. I did not comment on the person, I commented on the position and what the position does. So unless Mr. Kapinski sends me a formal letter saying that that's what he said without my input into this, then, um, I, I, I see this as, uh, an, uh, the MO of the person that made this statement. Once again, he's always sent the letter to everybody on the council when there was opposition of something. The letter was sent by the councilperson, and he would send his opinion back and address all of us, and I have not seen any documentation pertaining to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. I, I, I will say, I'm sorry, one second, Councilman Herring. I, I, I will say that I understand where you're coming from. Um, I can verify, uh, that, because I did speak to Mr. Kapinski, and I, I agree that you spoke on the position, uh, but just for, uh, transparency and independence, it was, the attorney communicated to me that we should take a consensus again, uh, without, uh, your vote or your opinion, uh, so that things could just be clear-cut. I understand that you want, um, uh, something written, but I'm just verifying what Councilman Herring is saying that the attorney did contact me as well and verified what Councilman Herring is saying is correct. Councilman Herring?
Yes, I just want to, um, clarify something. I just want to ask, when we were having that discussion, were we directly speaking about increasing the salary for the police clerk?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and that's, and I rest my case. No, she knew her sister was in that position, and she spoke on the need for that position to go up because of the qualifications of the position and all of this other stuff, that she should not have it been common, and knowing, I'm just trying to, uh, bring it to the floor so that it won't be an issue for her, you know, but if you want to vote on it, vote on it, and we can bring an ethics charge against you, Ms. Jones. That's how, that's how I have you so quick to accuse somebody of trying to attack you. No one's trying to attack you. I'm trying to keep you from getting an ethics charge, but maybe somebody should bring it because you did invoke your opinion, and it's something you shouldn't have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring, but we're just for, wanted clarity, there was nothing malicious about the conversation. So there wasn't any intent to, you know, to not be independent. It's just, I don't think anybody thought of it at the time. We were just speaking in general on positions, so, uh, now we have an opportunity to go back to, to make sure things are on the up and up, uh, and move forward. So with that, um, any other comments on the agenda before we adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Dr. Grant?
I should have raised my hand. The issue is not whether or not she commented on it. The issue is a conflict of interest. That's what you're looking at, a conflict of interest.
Yes, which is why, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So that's, that is why, that she may speak, but the co, the comment, I mean, the voting is the, uh, issue.
Yeah.
On the matter, so.
And we'll take another consensus. All right. With that, uh, and we'll add the consensus to the agenda. Uh, any opposition to the agenda? With the added consensus. Hearing none by unanimous consent. The, uh, agenda is adopted. All right. First up. Uh, we'll just do the consensus. Um, so as you all know, that we went into closed session and, uh, we made some changes to the budget as it relates to salaries. Um, and so we will separate the police clerk technician, uh, currently is in the budget with all of the updates at, um, uh, well, I can say it, forty-five thousand one hundred twenty-three. The consensus is to keep it there at forty-five thousand one forty-three or revert it back to where it was before the closed session, uh, which I think was forty-three thousand dollars. So yes, to keep it, no, to revert it back. Um. Council Clerk. Uh, sorry, hold on, Council Clerk. Uh, uh, Councilman Herring?
So this is actually a vote because we are in a private meeting.
Vote consensus, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Dr. Grant, so, Dr. Grant, you know, should it be vote consensus?
No, if there is one person that objects to it, I think you're looking for a vote at this time.
Okay.
The last time, it's not consensus at this point because you did have some, uh, members who objected.
Okay, thank you. Council Clerk?
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council Clerk. Just for clarity, this is for a staff member who is part of the police department administratively, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so my vote is yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes. So it'll stay, uh, at the forty-five, well, forty-three. All right. Next up is the emergency. Okay. Uh, the emerge, uh, to bring to the floor the emergency ordinance to adopt a classification and pay plan for the city of Glen Arden. Uh, is there a motion to bring this to the floor as the emergency resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Dr. Grant?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this item is on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Okay, then you don't have to vote on, uh, bringing it to the floor. Is the next item on the agenda is, so you don't have to vote on it because it's already the only agenda that has been approved. Okay?
Uh, it's an emergency resolution, though. We're bringing it as an emergency resolution. It takes five of seven votes to bring it as an emergency resolution.
Okay, thank you so much, but it's on, all I'm saying, you can move forward with that since you already voted on the agenda, and it's on the agenda. That's all I'm saying to you, sir. Okay, thank you. That's the second vote. You're voting on it twice. That's all I'm saying to you. All right.
Okay, thank you. Um, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Grant. But we're just, just to, you know, move things smoothly, we're just gonna keep it this way. We can address that afterwards, so you and I can talk about how we can make it better and make sure full council is on board with that change. Um. Uh, Councilwoman Jones? Councilwoman Jones, your hand is up.
I'm sorry, just one, one second. I thought I saw something that I wanted to, okay, no, okay, not on this. All right. I'm sorry, thank you.
There's a second, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries.
All right, so now that we have voted that it'll should be emergency resolution, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Sure. Emergency Ordinance Zero Ten Twenty-Two Three. The sponsor is, uh, President Derek Curtis at the request of administration. Uh, the public hearing was June thirteenth. It was an inclusive, uh, along with the budget. Uh, we are here in regular session on the eighteenth, and the date of introduction was July sixth. An emergency ordinance for the purpose of adopting a classification and pay plan for the city of Glen Arden. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, here in, here in after the city is a municipality organized under the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution and is defined by Maryland Code Local Government Article Subsection One Dash One-O-One G. And whereas pursuant to the Maryland Code Local Government Article Section Five Dash Two-O-Two, the city may adopt ordinances to, one, assure the government, the good government of the municipality, and two, protect and preserve the municipality's rights, property, and privileges. And whereas pursuant to Charter Section Six-O-Two Twenty-One of the Charter, the City Council of Glen Arden here in after the council has the express power to extend municipal funds for any municipal purpose and have to, and have general management and control of the finances of the city. And whereas during fiscal year twenty-two, the City Council or authorized the completion of a compensation study to determine the market rate salaries for all city authorized positions as compared to local municipal jurisdictions, regional and wider area local governments. And whereas Municipal Solutions of Goodyear, Arizona, a consulting firm that offers assistance with conducting compensation studies through salary surveys of other local governments, has prepared the classification and pay plans for local governments across the USA, was hired by the city to, to conduct a salary survey for a salary comparison of all city positions to local and regional governments. And whereas Municipal Solutions has provided a final report on their salary surveys and were subsequently tasked with preparing a classification and pay plan for the city of Glen Arden. And whereas the classification plan was developed from both the city's job descriptions and completion of employee surveys for each position that is filled by an incumbent, and the pay plan was developed based on the recommendations from the compensation study for minimum and maximum pay ranges. And whereas the city has been briefed on both the compensation study commissioned in twenty-twenty-two and the resulting classification and pay plan by representative of Municipal Solutions on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, final survey report, July sixth, twenty-twenty-three, proposed classification and pay plan. And whereas the Charter Sections Three-O-eight C and E respectively provide, one, that an emergency ordinance may be adopted at the same meeting as it was introduced, and two, may become effective on a date certain, uh, of, on a date certain. And whereas Charter Section Eight-O, Eight-O-seven B provides that if the council fails to adopt the budget by the second Monday in June, the budget for current fiscal year shall be deemed adopted for the ensuing year as if it had been enacted by ordinance until the council adopts a new budget. And now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in special regular session on the eighteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-three, that the attached classification and pay plan labeled Exhibit A is adopted to be effective for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four from July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, or until it is charged by a majority vote of the City Council, be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, that this emergency ordinance shall become effective upon the same day its passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Excuse me, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries, five zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the emergency ordinance for the purpose of adopting the city's FY twenty-twenty-four budget. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor as an emergency ordinance? Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, a vote to bring this forward as an emergency ordinance, Council Clerk?
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council, Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries.
Okay. Uh, so now it is uh, oh, Madam Clerk, could you read the, uh, emergency ordinance, please?
Excuse me, yes. Emergency Ordinance Zero Nine Twenty-Two Three. Uh, the sponsor is President Curtis. At the, uh, request of the administration, the public hearing was on June thirteenth. We're in special regular session today, July eighteenth, and the date of introduction was June fifth, twenty-twenty-three. An emergency ordinance for the purpose of adopting the city's fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, here in the city is a municipality organized under the authority of of Article eleven E of Maryland Constitution and is defined by Maryland Code Local Government Article Subsection One Dash One-O-One G. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government Article Section Five Dash Two-O-Two, the city may adopt ordinances to, one, assure the good government of the municipality, and two, protect and preserve the municipality's rights, property, and privileges. Whereas pursuant to Chapter Section Six-O-Two Twenty-One, the charter, the city of, City Council of Glen Arden, here and after the council has the express power to extend municipal funds for any purpose, public purpose, and have the general management and control of the finances of the city. And whereas Charter Section Three-O-eight, Section C and Section E respectively provide that, one, an emergency ordinance may be adopted at the same meeting it is introduced, and two, may become effective on a certain date. And whereas Charter Section Eight-O-seven B provides that if the council fails to adopt the budget by the second Monday in June, the budget for the current fiscal year shall be deemed adopted for the ensuing fiscal years, fiscal year as if it had been enacted by ordinance until the council adopts a new budget. And now therefore being enacted and ordained on, by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in special regular session on the eighteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-three, that fiscal year budget for the city of Glen Arden is as follows. Total general revenues, six million forty-nine four fifty-seven. Total expenditures, six million thirty-four four seventy-nine. Uh. Special revenue fund. Expenditures, three million six hundred fourteen five seventy-four. Uh, special police grant. Total revenues, five hundred thousand fourteen nine thirty-five. Total expenditures, one hundred and fourteen nine thirty-five. Uh, subtotal budget surplus deficit, four hundred thousand. Pay grant revenues, forty thousand. Expenditures, forty thousand. Uh, subtotal budget surplus deficit, zero. Uh, camera photo enforcement revenue, sixty-three thousand. Expenditures, sixty-three thousand. Subtotal budget surplus deficit, zero. Glen Arden Farmers Market revenues, thirty thousand. Expenditures, twenty thousand five hundred. Subtotal budget surplus, nine thousand five hundred. Tax rebate event, one point five million. Total revenues, one point five million. Total expenses, tax rebate, one point five million. Subtotal, subtotal budget surplus deficit is zero. Total surplus deficit, all special revenue funds, is one million one hundred eighteen thousand two ninety-three. Capital projects. Um, total budget surplus of all government funds one million one hundred thirty three thousand two seventy one. Enterprise Fund GAAP. I'm sorry, enterprise fund budget GAAP basis. Operating revenues one hundred eighty two thousand six forty three. Operating expenses one eighty one six seventy three surplus deficit nine hundred and seventy dollars. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden that this emergency orders. Is and shall become effective upon the same date as passage.
Thank you. Is there a motion bringing this emergency ordinance to the floor for adoption? Move by Councilman Jones. I will second it. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, I have a few questions because I'm. Um, and one of them is again, I sent it an email um. Is the treasurer's salary that went up to ninety nine thousand? Now, I know when we had our meeting, you know, consensus was done and the consensus was not favorable for taking that up to that level. So how was it in this budget at that level?
It it was favorable from the three uh three to five people in the in attendance.
Mister uh Mister President, it doesn't work like that. Um. It is not the number of people in attendance. It's you have to have at least four to move any action forward, and that's a charter requirement. Section three oh six in the charter. When it talks about um a forum. It says no actions shall take place without the favorable vote of at least four members of the council. So no matter how many people are present, you still need four votes. From the charter.
Well, the vote um on today's budget will approve it.
Well, no, right now the number needs to go back down and you need to take a vote now like you did with the other. Position because you did not have a favorable vote to take it up to ninety nine.
That that's fine. That's fine, Councilman Herring. So that's one.
Okay, the other one is that position for. The assistant, it was it was an assistant staff accountant. Now that is a staff accountant at seventy thousand dollars, which is a fifteen thousand dollar increase, and that was not discussed in any meetings. That I was in. And I and 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 the thing about that is that again. It was not brought to us and I have a very big problem with something like that of that magnitude happening without council um consent. Or uh council knowing about it. And then to see that this position is not a contract position, which again is another issue for me. Um, I think that needs to be taken back down to where it was. And anything that want that need to be modified on that need to be modified um. You know, through the correct procedures.
Okay. Um, are you looking for answer for? Oh, let's take the second one first. Are you looking for answer for the city manager?
I'm looking for an answer from, I mean, I mean, I got our email from the city manager on what it what it what it what's happening and I think everybody got that email, I'm assuming. That, you know. That was done and I'm 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 figuring out how when it ain't run through it didn't run through this council. You're talking fifteen thousand dollars to a budget and signing contracts.
No. Okay, um, I'm in agreement with you. I did not know about uh that as well. Um. Councilwoman Gillon.
I I too am in agreement because it did. Come to me, I I didn't know this was happening, but I do think in all fairness, I don't know. How much we can share on this particular form since it's not closed session and it pertains to. While it pertains to the budget, it also pertains to some. For lack of better word, personnel or employee stuff, so. I'm not sure how we can best um hear from the city manager. On this that this budget has to be moved forward, but there still needs to be some, and I did get the email response as well, but. It's still something that. If we're mentioning right now, it's sort of kind of, I feel like we're leaving the topic. You know, in limbo right now as well. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Um, so then I guess then there'll be two. Three votes total, um, one for the treasurer, one to well, the um, I think. The staff accountant because one is the salary issue and two, there's another position. Uh, and three is the vote on the budget. All right. Yes, Councilman Herring.
Mr. President, I'm not sure why there there's going to be a vote on the staff composition. The position needs to be taken back to where it was. Because it was not put in the budget.
Yep, yep, yep. Sorry. You're correct. Dr. Grant?
Mister Chair, I think the member is asking to either table or postpone to all members are properly notified.
Okay.
They uh postpone. Um, indefinitely, which will kill it. So you're asking to lay on the table. At this time or postpone.
Okay. So we will postpone. The the increase of the fifteen thousand dollars until it was it's it goes to the proper channels. Uh, so thereby reducing uh the budget by fifteen thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I I I, Mr. President, I think she's talking about postponing the budget. And we can get clarification on that. Yes.
Why will we postpone the budget?
You read the resolution. As to any changes in the budget. Uh, at this particular time will um be maintained. At the present budget level. There is some unreadiness at this particular time, which you cannot change the budget until all the members are clear and have opportunity to vote on.
Well, they will have the opportunity to vote on it today.
There's some unreadiness, so you need to vote on, well, they need to vote it up or down. And if you vote it up and down, it's gonna kill it. Period. Okay.
I'm I'm still confused.
If they agree with it, that make the it'll change. If they don't agree with it, they are voting it down. So you still will be at the same spot. They will not get the increase.
Correct. So they won't get the increase.
That's correct.
Okay.
What I may I, uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Herring, go ahead.
Yes, and I and I think um Dr. Grant is is basically saying that. If there's some unsettledness or somebody seems to don't agree with that increase because of. The way it went, they should be voting that this you vote, they should vote down, they should vote no on this budget. And if you vote, if everybody votes no on this budget, then it kills the budget altogether. And you gotta come back to the drawing.
Yeah, no, so we're not gonna do that. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna revert the 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 discussion here is when we're gonna adopt the budget. And we can adopt the budget with the change to decrease the um. The uh assistants, the staff account position back down to its original level. Uh, and those are the amendments during the discussion. As you've brought up, that's the only amendment. Uh, and then we're, since we all agree with it, the only other thing is to to um. To vote on the um, the treasurer's salary stand at the ninety nine. Uh, and depending on that, they'll have stayed there or decreased, and with that, we'll finalize the budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Herring.
Yes, I mean, I make a motion that you table this legislation. I I'm I'm very uncomfortable because that was slipped in. That seventy thousand was slipped in without. Any conversation with this council, and I'm not sure what else. I haven't had a chance to look through this whole budget because we got it yesterday, the revised one we got yesterday. And I'm not sure what else was put in this budget, what else needs to be looked at and modified and compared to what we had before. I mean, with one day advance notice, I found one thing that was fifteen thousand dollars and. You know, this 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 council had no input on it, and so I'm uncomfortable with even voting on the budget until I get a clear understanding on what changed in this budget. And I can review the the budget we're voting on now with the last budget that we had. Um. I don't like doing business like this. I like to be, I like things to be transparent, and I don't think, I don't like the way this came across, because if I had not caught it. We would have voted on. As is, and I don't think that's fair to us as a council to um, you know. To really, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have trust that that nothing else in this budget has been changed. And I need to look through it again, so I am, I I am unready to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilman Jones?
Uh, thank you, Council President. So will that also include the uh promotions that the police department made?
Sir?
The police department did some promotions. I'm not sure if there was salary increases connected to that. Uh, with with my question is, will this also affect what what was done there with the promotions?
No, the all those are are all that we discussed in a closed session. Uh, have been implemented. The only additional thing that the council wasn't aware of was the staff accountant's position.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that that they made some promotions after that um meeting we had, and I'm not sure if those promotions were connected with salary. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Also, Mister Herring made a motion. Is there a second to this motion?
Mister Chair, if you would state the motion, please, or have the clerk state the motion, please, so everyone.
The motion by Mister Herring is to table the um, the adoption of the budget. Um, until. Not indefinitely, uh, until he's had some more time. Um. To review it. Councilman Hairston?
Yeah, I had a question. If we um, the increase. If we don't, if we if we vote on the budget tonight and don't add the increase, we 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 can't put it in either way, right? It won't be able to go in at all, because we would be approving the budget without the increase, so we have to go back, we have to come back to this, right, regardless? Because we can't approve it without the increase, right?
So eh, we we can uh, yeah, so we can approve the budget without also approving an increase for. That position. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I was saying, I guess I was saying we won't be able to really like review it. Like, if we approve a budget today, like, rather we keep it in or take it out, it's it's. Like she said, it's um, it's the same either way, right?
I think so.
Yeah. And if I, if we are second, can we come, can we get this done tomorrow? Is it possible that we can get this, come back tomorrow, is everybody available or going on?
Yeah, I I I would be. Councilwoman Jones?
I I think what what should happen is it since um. Protocol wants to be used on this, that we need to have a meeting with the city manager, the treasurer and the council to discuss this position. And this and the salary. Um.
Okay. All right, so with that.
And then then schedule another meeting for the uh, the budget.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. All right, uh, Herring, and then we'll 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 close out this discussion. Councilman Herring?
I mean, I do want to say that uh Councilman Jones did bring up another point that I'm now I'm worried about that because I were. The promotions that were. Done, were they incorporated in this budget and are they in line with our pay scale that we had? Um. You know, I mean, see, that's what I'm saying, there's a lot of questions in place. I didn't know about promotions in the police department. I mean, I knew they had an award ceremony, but I. Didn't know about the promotion, so, yeah.
All right, so with all this confusion, I'm going to uh second. Councilman Herring's motion to table the vote on the budget. Um. Uh, I think we have to vote on that now. Council Clerk?
My uh Mister Chair, until first discussion with um the necessary necessary um persons that you identify.
Thank you. We'll postpone into uh further discussions had uh by, you know, the uh stakeholders involved. Council Clerk?
Councilwoman Gillon.
I vote to table, so that is that a yes? I just wanna.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, table?
Two, two things, I'm gonna have another motion, but Dr. Grant, because we tabled it, we don't need to bring it back as an emergency ordinance. Then when we bring it back, we'll just be voting on the the budget, correct?
Right, um, and I would advise. That all members of this body here be given the necessary uh information. For clarity, so they won't ask these kinds of questions.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss this tonight, so we don't have to postpone it. Uh, so we don't have to create another meeting. Uh, for another day. Yes.
That would not be appropriate at this time. And my question to you would be, how could you do that and you have not met with the budget person? And all other persons that are involved for clarity?
Yes, thank you. They will be involved in the discussion tonight. Those persons are included in this meeting. So. So with that, um. I make a motion that we go into closed session. To discuss the salary that was put in the budget, the salaries uh that were put in the budget. Um. Related to personnel. Is there a second?
Um, one of the one, Mr. President, we have not, we have not finished the agenda. Should we have citizens' comments and then after that make that motion?
I'm sorry. I didn't see that on our agenda. Let me see. Ah, you're right, I apologize. I'll hold my motion until I have citizens' comments. So with that, we'll open the floor to citizens' comments. Please raise your virtual hand if you have a comment. Um, if you do not know how to raise your virtual hand, please open your mic and I'll acknowledge you. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, good evening. I am um. I am very disappointed that the council is not prepared. Uh, I think that you all are rushing into things and not paying attention to details. And it's important to pay attention to details because if not, then you're gonna be. Um, approving something that you should not be approving. So with that being said, um, I. Appreciate Mister Herring for uh looking closer at the budget, and I would just recommend that all council members. Look closely at the budget to see what is. Um, is in there and to see if that is what has been approved by the whole council. Uh, I'm I'm also disappointed to hear that um. You all have salary increases that you don't, everybody doesn't know about, so um. I I I just think that you all need to to um be more diligent in what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any other comment? Hear none? Um. I make a motion that we go into closed sessions plus salaries related to personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Council Clerk?
Councilwoman Gillon?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Uh, Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries?
Thank you. With that, the open portion of this meeting is now closed. Uh, I'll ask for the chief, the treasurer and city manager to remain behind, please. Everyone else, thank you. Have a good night. Could you stop the?